Is Matt on this feed yet?
He's there.
I'm here.
Hey, Matt, can I ask you a quick question? I just was curious about the status of that appeal on the bowling alley case. What's going on in that thing? Do you have an idea?
No, I'm not sure what what the status of that is. That's not what I'm so.
Oh, okay.
And let you know.
That'd be cool. Thanks. I just I'm just curious, you know, it's been a while, so I don't know where we are and it's all. Okay, cool. Thanks. That's all.
Yep.
That's funny because we just asked a question about that in the finance meeting too.
Oh.
How's it looking, Holly?
We have a quorum.
All right, we'll just give it another minute or so and see if we have any last minute arrivals.
Somebody tap dancing?
I'm sorry, that's me typing. Let me mute my phone.
I I just had to have a little fun.
Yeah.
Much longer.
Little soft shoe. I've got my straw hat and bamboo cane.
Tim, I was typing an email to my partner, Amy Collins, to ask her what's going on with the bowling alley case, so.
Thanks, really. Thanks. Appreciate it, man.
That's pretty timely. Excellent. Let me know when you're ready, Holly.
I'm ready.
All right, we'll call this meeting to order. It's Tuesday, August 25th. This is the city council meeting. First order of business would be the roll call. Holly?
Horusman?
Here.
Caravella?
Here.
Doom? Um.
Somebody writing their blunder?
Dean, is there like a fan next to your computer?
Sure.
Uh, Hiley?
You there?
Here.
Hirsch?
Here.
Hunt?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
Lagaki? Here. Mieski?
Here.
Reeves?
Here.
Riley?
Here.
Schumacher?
Here.
Doom is absent and excuse.
All right. Thank you very much. Communications, I have a quick one. I just wanted to share that, you know, my thoughts are with all those that are affected by what occurred in Kenosha a couple of days ago. You know, deeply troubled by what's going on and certainly the effects are felt by more than just the people that live there. So just wanted to share that with the council members. Any council members have any communications? No communications from council members. Rodney has agreed to give us an update on the road construction.
A surface pavement was put down on Main Street between Page and Van Buren today with that segment planned to be open by the end of this week. Surface layer on the section between Van Buren and Hall is planned for later this week as well. There's a there's a possibility that that will be open to traffic late this week or first part of next week. The Main Street downtown area, they're working on the last phase of that between Water Street and Page Street, and that will be completed and opened for traffic by the end of this week as well. The Forest Street and the parking lot for City Hall will continue to be worked on, but should be completed mid-September-ish, so that that won't affect traffic on Main Street. So that will be completed. The Main Street will be opened up by no later than the middle of next week. Roby Road pavement on that is planned to begin this Thursday. With some luck, they'll have both layers of pavement put on Roby Road as well as Harrison Court by the end of this week with the hope that that will also be open to traffic this week at the end of the week, Friday or Saturday.
Have a question for Rodney?
Sure.
What is the status between Hole Avenue and Van Buren as far as the unacceptable paving on the south side?
Yeah, we've opened the discussions with the DOT. It's their project, but we're certainly concerned about it as you are. We'll continue to convey the message and we're we're really pressing them to try to deal with the northern lanes differently than they did on the southern lanes to begin with. Try to deal with it properly before they surface pave the north two lanes later this week. But I I don't have a final answer from them on that and how that would be addressed, but certainly the condition concern has been raised both by us as well as the public has reached out to the DOT directly to raise concerns about that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. Rodney, just refresh my memory. When is the roundabout going in at Hole and Main Street?
There's a three roundabout project, Hole and Silverado, Highway 138 West, and the Roby Road Roundabout are all slated for the same calendar year. They're slated to be done in 2022. There is a possibility that they'll be advanced to the 2021 construction season.
So they might be done next year.
Yes, they're smaller projects in dollars in the DOT world. They're hopeful that there's some remaining funds for projects that didn't get completed that would open that up to be completed in 2021. So the design and and planning is being prepared so that they'd be in a position to construct those in 2021 if the funds were available.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alongside that, has the issue with that small access road at Hole and Silverado been addressed?
Certainly, there's been discussions with the DOT, but I don't think there's any any revision to their plans at this point. I know the owner of that property is looking at how to direct people to the facility, both utilizing Silverado from the north as well as Deport Court. So they're gonna try to, I think, communicate that to their visitors so that they wouldn't find the appropriate way to get to the facility depending on where they're coming from.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
All right, anyone else before we move on? All right, hearing none. Minutes and reports are in the packet. Nobody was signed up for the public comment period, which leads us to the consent agenda. We have three items on there, and I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So both?
I heard Alder Johnson. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Alder Hiley. Would anybody like anything removed from the consent agenda? Here, none. All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed. That motion carries. Takes us to old business, R123 of 2020. That did go through Public Works last week and it was approved four to zero. Alder Person Mieski?
Yes.
Do you want to make a motion on the sidewalk policy or would you like to just go into discussion?
Let's just go into discussion because there's nothing for me to say on this.
All right.
It's a sidewalk installation policy because the city is stone, so there's no motion there.
There is a resolution in the packet. So we can either have a discussion. I would entertain a motion for the resolution and then if there's any amendments.
Mayor, I'll I'll move to approve the sidewalk installation policy as stated in the resolution.
Is there a second?
One second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. If you're not speaking, can you mute your mic, please? All right, so there's a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one? Would like to go first?
I would if I might.
Alder Person Riley, go ahead. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the pleasure of addressing the Public Works Committee last week, and I think they tolerated my presence pretty well. We had a lot of discussion during the day, had a lot of discussion that I was allowed to be involved with respect to how one would document what factors were considered and what the determination was by the committee. The current draft had does not articulate that at all, even though that was, I believe, approved unanimously by the committee members. I don't I don't think anybody, well, I don't think the chair was wild about it, but I maybe relented. I don't recall what the chair did. But in any event, it's not in here. And and I think, Mayor, you kindly tried to do something with it shortly before this this council meeting, you know, to suggest some possible language. All I'm looking for is this. The determination was that they would document the factors that they applied, that they considered, and then their determination after application of those factors in the minutes. I I believe that Director Haybear thought that was perfectly fine. I know he did, but it's nowhere in this right now. For some reason, it didn't, no language was was put into this to the sidewalk policy to reflect that one amendment basically to it that the Public Works Committee did entertain and approved at their last meeting. So I I would, I'm looking for that to be amended to include language to that effect. Other than that, everything's just hunky dory.
All right, so the reason it wasn't included was because at the committee, nobody made a motion to amend the policy that was in the packet. So what I tried to do shortly before the meeting, when it was brought to my attention, was to put together some language and and this would be added to item K of the policy. And certainly, if somebody wants to make an amendment or tweak this language, I'm open to it, but I think that would capture the concerns that Alder Riley has to make sure that there's a public record of the deliberation that occurred regarding the.
Yeah. Sorry. Your Honor, this is Sid. This is Sid. Can I hit the floor quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
I I also, I talked to you just before this meeting. You came up with some red line language. I also came up with some language and mine was in the form of a motion, and that would be that documentation regarding the criteria used to determine the existence or non-existence of sidewalks or deviation from the policy in the minutes of the public work session in which the determination is made.
So do you want to make that as an amendment?
My, that is my motion, yes.
All right. Is there a second?
If I, I'm sorry.
Is that a second, Fred?
Yeah.
Okay, so Sid, can you just read that again so we make sure Holly captures it?
Documentation regarding the criteria used to determine the existence or non-existence of sidewalks or deviations from sidewalk policy in the minutes of the public work session in which the determination is made.
Is there any discussion on the amendment?
I can just discuss very quickly, and that is that I think that that captures exactly what we had talked about in the in the public works meeting that we had just last week. Excuse me, Tim?
Who wants to be recognized? I'm sorry I missed it.
That was me, Tim Fred.
Okay, go ahead.
I was present at the meeting also, and I do think it was our intention that we would include the criteria used in the particular meeting that was approved that.
I, excuse me, I can't hear anybody. I think Mr. Riley is moving or something. It's really hard to hear Sid or Fred talk.
I'm not doing a thing.
Tim, your phone is like making a whistling sound.
All right. Well, he's muted now, so it's quiet. All right, so go ahead, Fred.
Yeah, I was just saying, it really was our intention to include in the policy the wording that the determination by the committee would be included in the minutes and that it would clarify which criteria had been applied. And I think, I'm not certain what happened, but that definitely was the wording we wanted to include.
Yeah, I think it just didn't formally get voted on that way. It wasn't amended. So what was voted on, what was actually policy. Attorney Dragney, do you have some thoughts about that?
Yes, I I think I understand what you're trying to accomplish, but I haven't heard yet actual language that I think is what you want to accomplish that. There are really two different issues that are in play here. One is Works Committee's decision regarding whether to construct a new sidewalk on either or both sides of the street section 4A5. The other possible decision, the committee, and and that decision has to be made under the policy. And if they make that decision, they are doing so in accordance with the policy. And so one thing that you're looking for is language in the policy that says that the Public Works Committee's decision and the rationale supporting that decision will be reflected in the minutes of the meeting and to go in section 5 sub I at the end, where it says, in making any such determination, the public works shall shall consider the factors in section 4A5. I would, I would put a comma after that and say, and the committee's rationale for making such decisions shall be shall be stated in the minutes of the meeting. So that's one issue. The other issue is whether the committee chooses to deviate from the policy. And that's a separate issue, and that's under K. Right now, it says recommendations to deviate from the policy shall be considered by the committee who will make a recommendation to the council. If you also want the committee's rationale for recommending a deviation C to be stated in the minutes, then that should be stated under K, item K.
Right, and that's what I was suggesting, but you're saying we should have it in both places.
Yes, because it's two separate issues.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to, I'd like to withdraw my motion and go with the wording that was just used by Matt.
Okay.
Just like to withdraw my motion.
All right. So and so I need a second on a new motion.
Second that as well.
Okay, so Matt, can you just repeat that then so everybody understands what you just said and Holly catches it?
Yes. So first would be to amend the language in section 5 sub I to add at the very end. Holly, are you ready?
Hold on. I was muting. I had to mute Tim Riley because your phone is very loud. I can't hear over it, so you are muted right now, but okay, I'm ready.
Yep, so section 5 sub I at the very end, insert the following sentence. The committee's rationale supporting its determination shall be stated in the minutes of the committee's meeting. Period. Next, in section K, the following sentence should be added at the end. The committee's rationale supporting its recommendations to deviate from the sidewalk installation policy shall be stated in the minutes of the meeting. Period.
All right, I know Alder Person Lagaki, I saw your hand waving.
I apologize. That was domestic matter.
Oh, okay. Did I see President Hirsch?
Yeah, I guess looking at, because I haven't, I'm not in Public Works. I I guess the item in this policy that I have a stern with. Riley, your phone.
I can give me just a second if I may. I just unmuted. I just muted the entire time. I understand, Regina, I'm just saying, I was muted the entire time. I was told my phone was an issue, so I'm trying to figure out what's going on. That's all. Okay, I'm muted again.
Thank you.
You can always chat me if you want to be recognized if I don't see you wave.
I guess on item number, I think it's nine, the budgetary impacts to the city, I guess, I don't know why that's in there because as a council member, that's our job. And why doesn't it seems redundant to have it in there, and it seems like then it's special that these special neighborhoods, we think about budgetary impacts, but not anywhere else in the city. And I I don't know about equity issues with that, if that's really want to present in our resolution. I think we do that for all of it. I don't need, I need to know why you felt the need that it had to be stated. That's our job as council to, you know, look at budgetary impacts to the city. So why are you stating the obvious?
Thank you.
Anybody from Public Works that want?
I'll speak to that. I totally agree with you. It's, we're being redundant and totally agree.
I agree from finances perspective also. I mean, it's it's inherent in in what we do anyway.
Okay, then I I make a motion to delete item number nine, budgetary impacts to the city.
Okay.
So that would be a second amendment by Alder Person Hirsch, Council President Hirsch, and a second by Alder Person Mieski to delete item budgetary impacts to the city. So any discussion on that one?
I would offer something. Is my phone, though, like still really loud? I don't know what's going on.
Sounds good now.
Okay, all right, thank you. Hey, just just a thought here with respect to the president's objection to this. One, the policy is that it is just done. So the budget doesn't really matter, right? It's just done. It has, they have to be installed. In this instance, it is discretionary as to whether or not you're going to do it. So if you're thinking about whether or not you're going to do it on either one or both or neither side of the street that the committee could, and I think they already do, if I recall the discussion, look at the budgetary impact, potential budgetary impact. You know, six months ago, we didn't know that we were going to be in a pandemic and the economy was going to hell. We had no idea. And now we're in a pandemic and the economy is going to hell. And so one would think that there are circumstances that might change where, yep, you know what, we thought it would be a good idea. We'd like to do it, but we don't have the money. So that's that's my, that's why I believe that that is actually a relevant and important factor. It's a discretionary act with respect to the sidewalk installation policy. And circumstances might change and, okay, so do we just do one side? Because right now, we're gonna have to borrow God knows how much money. And we really shouldn't be borrowing that much money, whatever the case may be. I I don't know, again, why it would be a burden for the committee to just look at that and say, hey, yeah, we got the money. Cool, that one, check that one out. No problem. I I don't understand why it's really objectionable. So I understand what the argument is. I don't think it's a good argument.
It's not an argument. It's a fact. As a council member, that is our job to look at budgetary impacts to the city, no matter what resolution that we're trying to go for. So to me, put it out there again, is redundant, but it all, if I was a person living in not one of these neighborhoods, I would be a little appalled that you're thinking only of these neighborhoods that currently don't have sidewalks as to the budgetary impacts, but not into the neighborhoods that have. And I think it's a really slippery slope with respect to equity issues with respect to the different neighborhoods. And so I really, really think that it's it's, we're still gonna look at that no matter what, because that's our job, but to put it blatantly that that is all we care about for this particular instance is not a good idea.
Okay, can I speak to that briefly, Mayor?
And I know at that point, we have to see if somebody else wants to speak to it.
I apologize. I appreciate that. I think Tom does. Yep, but Tom, okay, here we go. Just quickly, one, it is an argument. Okay. Get into semantics here, but you are saying this should be gone, and this is why. You're saying it should be gone on an actual basis, but you're still making an argument. Equity argument. I mean, again, this is the only instance where you really have any discretion with respect to where the sidewalks are going to go in. So it's it's not a question of equity one way or another. If you want to change the policy so we don't always require sidewalks elsewhere, then that argument that you but otherwise, it doesn't make any sense because this is the only instance where you are using discretion to determine whether or not you're gonna install one, two, none, or whatever. So that's all. Thank you. I won't speak to that issue.
All right, thank you. Alder Person Mieski?
Two, two things. Realize that is discretionary, because the council can vote on anything in the budget and have it removed. Second, I don't think Public Works should be doing.
Okay, all right, so we had a mode, had a amendment, another amendment, so amendments voted on. Should we do the last one first, Matt, or should I have done the second one?
Why don't you just decide which one you want voted and get, and I think that's fine. Just make sure it's clear. Everyone knows what they're voting on.
All right, so we're still talking about this number nine here. Does anybody else have any comments? Otherwise, we'll we'll vote on that amendment first. Alder Person Lagaki, go ahead.
Thank you, and really waiting at you, Mayor. I, a simplistic comment, somewhat hopeful comment, but do you think that in our discussion of costs to citizens and property owners, I believe that's sort of addressed in Roman numeral five. I believe that's sort of addressed in Roman numeral five. Do you think that perhaps Roman numeral budgetary impacts to citizens? Point of discussion.
Again, if you put that as citizens, are there places that you're, when the council decides to put sidewalks in, that's under the other parts of this policy, they're going to say, well, why aren't you thinking about budgetary impacts on me? So I, again, I think you're really opening up a big can of worms with respect to equity issues from one neighborhood to the X, when you put it so blatantly out there.
Anybody else have any thoughts about removing this number nine? All right, so we'll vote on this amendment, so the amendment would be to remove number nine. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed?
I oppose, I'm opposed.
There's two opposed, so that amendment carries, so that takes us back to the previous amendment, which were the two items that Sid brought up, that Matt added language on for both of them, Holly, can you kind of repeat that, just as a reminder here?
So the motion was to amend the language in section the committee's rationale supporting its determination shall be stated in the minutes of the committee's meeting. And then to add in section K, that the committee's rationale supporting deviation from sidewalk policy shall be stated in the minutes of the meeting.
Okay. Any more discussion on that amendment?
One thing, I'll wait for you to speak to it, of course, because I've spoken.
Anybody else on these, this amendment? Go ahead, Alder Person Riley.
Thank you, Mayor, um, I, I would, I guess I would just ask perhaps, and Matt can decide if he thinks that this is too much, but perhaps add just a phrase with respect to minutes reflect the factors applied in the rationale, so a phrase to the effect of, because there will be different factors applied in different instances, some, some instances, the factors won't apply, I suspect at all, and they'll just be going in, right? But there may be different right in each instance. Language might be amended to include a phrase to that effect, minutes reflect the factors applied and the committee's rationale.
If you want to make that motion, I have no legal concern with that.
Okay, I would move, I would move then that Matt's language be amended to include that phrase, please. Sure.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Actually, it, it's the, really that addition really only belongs in the first place, under section, uh, I can't remember, I, what we're talking about, yeah, it doesn't belong under the other one.
Okay.
I, I agree, I'm sorry, thank you.
I will second that.
All right, second by Borisma, so any discussion on that? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, so that was language that was added to what we previously had on Sid's motion, so now we have to vote on that motion as amended, which is the whole sentence that Matt had put together.
Well, I, I think my language was intended to totally replace Sid's earlier language.
To withdraw, just before Matt, uh, included with his amendment, I withdrew my amendment.
Okay, that's fine, so that would take us back to the original motion as amended twice. Once for this language here and once to remove that item nine. More discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? Hot mic. There we go, thank you, all right, next item of business is new business, and that would be ordinance seventeen of twenty twenty, this is a first reading coming from the Plan Commission, Alder Person Caravelo.
Yes, if actually, that could be, there, it is magically appearing.
First reading.
This is first reading of ordinance seventeen of twenty twenty and ordinance amending zoning code section seventy eight dash four oh seven and seventy eight dash four oh eight of the Stoughton Municipal Code of Ordinances.
All right, and did you want to walk us through this, or would you like some help with it, or what, what's your preference?
I think since there will probably be questions, um, I think this essentially is just kind of cleaning up something that the way it was, was technically, I guess, unenforceable. And from there, I think I'll hand it over to Rodney, because he'll be able to tackle the questions much better than I can.
Yeah, certainly, the, the language in the zoning code was not clear on how to deal with a substandard lot or non-conforming structure on, on certain lots within the city, we worked with the city attorney's office to try to modify this to make it enforceable and understandable, and the first draft is before you for your consideration. It came out of Plan Commission unanimously to recommend the modified language.
So can you explain what a non-conforming, what that means?
Non-conforming lot, for example, we have minimum lot size requirements. There might have been lots that were plotted prior to the today's zoning code, where those lots were in existence prior to today's standards being in place. Therefore, those are considered non-conforming lots. A non-conforming structure, for example, could be a building on a parcel that doesn't meet today's setback standards. In other words, it was built prior to the zoning setback that required, say, a ten-foot setback in a side yard. It may be only nine or eight feet, for example, so that's a legal non-conforming structure allowed to continue. This language helps to clarify what can, we certainly don't want to remove those structures, we want them to allow to, to remain in place. But if there's ever an addition on that building or desired interest in having an addition on that building, we have to deal with the non-conforming structure language.
So basically, these are grandfathered in.
Existing, yes, existing facilities and uses that were legal at the time remain available to be used conforming structure, correct?
Someday, I'm gonna understand where that saying came from.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, this is a real estate issue. Real estate licensure. One of a, one of these considerations sometimes is that you may have a residential that requested for use as a commercial, would this apply to that or not?
So it, it has to be a legal use within the district, so converting a residential to a commercial use, if it was done lawfully at the time, then it would be allowed to continue as such. But if, if it was done when the code wouldn't have allowed that conversion to a commercial use, that would not be a legal non-conforming use.
And one more question about that, and I understand that, what about for a single family to a multifamily?
Same thing, if the multifamily use was put into existence at the time, it was legal to do so, then it would be allowed to remain and continue as a legal non-conforming use. You couldn't convert it to a multifamily use if the code didn't allow you to do that today.
Then, uh, but a petition can be made to the city for non-conforming use and the city can consider that in any case, correct?
I'm not sure of your question, uh, but you can attempt to rezone a property, to convert a single-family property to a duplex, for example. It would still have to meet the standards of the zoning district, and it would have to be applied as part of a rezoning application.
Thank you, Rodney, I just wanted to clarify that, that, uh, it's not just for a grandfather, again, it could potentially be for another use for that structure, which could be, uh, which go, could go to, uh, the city for reconsideration and for use of that, of that property.
I just gave him one.
Any other questions, otherwise this will be back to us and at the next meeting. All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the next one, which is Resolution one twenty seven of twenty twenty. This one comes from, uh, Utilities, Alder Person Jensen.
Can you get that up so I can read it? There we go. Thank you. Okay. It says, uh, Resolution one twenty seven twenty twenty authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the Stoughton Utility twenty nineteen wastewater treatment facility and sanitary sewer collection system compliance maintenance annual report. And I would move for approval.
Is there a second?
So I was on vacation or not at the bill handle this for me, please.
Very good, thank you. This actually is an annual report that we do every year, it's a requirement of DNR, and really the intent of this is to have an understanding of ultimately how, um, the collection system as well as the plant is operating. This actually was implemented in nineteen eighty seven, as we kind of walk through this, it's, it's, we really, year after year, um, overall, the plant is doing very well, the collection system, we've got great maintenance. There's one item that we always kind of have a little bit of a lower kind of walk through, the second to last page, so page twenty eight kind of does a nice job of really highlighting, um, ultimately what we're looking at. Thank you, so as we look at these sections, the influence is the plant, and, and every year, we don't get great marks. Couple of reasons for that is we do tend to have a lot of I and I, we also have a lot of, uh, high, you know, higher strength of waste than say the plant was originally rated for. So we tend to get Ds in this area year after year, it's never been an issue, it's something that we always work out with DNR. They're very aware of it, and again, it's just something that we have annually, we could at some point in time take a look at having the plant rerated. But given the fact of the ultimately the BODs, the total suspended solids and phosphorus, we have excellent treatment from the plant. So as long as we maintain the excellent treatment, that inflow and the strength that we have from, you know, coming into the plant is not an issue. The next category, and we've got on treatment, it's the board and we can system biosolids is ultimately when we take our sludge and we take that out to the fields and exactly how we're addressing that. Last year, we did have a, a calculation issue and we were a few points there, but this year we did perfectly and so got an A in that area as well. The next item that they look at is staffing as well as preventative maintenance. So exactly what programs we have in place to make sure that we're maintaining the plans, that we're being proactive in that work, and again, here again, but an A. Operations certification is the next section, so it takes for certified operators on staff, exactly what we're providing for training, and we've an A in that area. And actually, they take a look at how much cash we have on hand, how much monies we actually have set aside in case there's some catastrophic worst being significant that we need to address some emergency response. And again, in that area, we've got an A, and then ultimately, they take a look at our collection system. And the collection system area, a little different than the first section, they really look at the maintenance, you know, how much are we televising our pipes? How much are we actually replacing? And, you know, the work that's really being done, the collection system, really from a preventative maintenance standpoint, and again, in this category, we got an A. So overall, we got a three point seven two, which is extremely high marks. And very pleased with how the plans continues to perform and our staff and, and excellent job that they're doing. Any questions?
All right, there's no questions, so we have a motion on the table, and all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? Any opposed? None opposed, that motion does carry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item also comes from Utilities, and this one, I'll enlarge it for you, it's R one twenty eight, it should be.
Yep. Yeah, Resolution one twenty eight twenty twenty authorizing and directing the proper city officials to name the city of Stoughton Utilities Director and/or the Stoughton Director of Finance Comptroller as authorized representatives to file applications for financial assistance from the State of Wisconsin Environmental Improvement Fund, and I would move for approval.
For a second, second by Legaki. Right, and Alder Chris Jensen?
Uh, yeah, again, if Jill could go ahead and address this.
Good, thank you, Greg, um, ultimately, this is, we're, we're requesting this to be authorized, um, because, um, that grant that we're actually looking to, um, go after the next, this coming September for the lead service line replacement, ultimately, that's a provision of that application. We need to actually identify, um, who ultimately would be that authorized representative. We talked internally and felt that it made sense, because this is obviously is financial impact and, and obviously also on the utility side, that we didn't name myself as and, uh, to have that role, one or, or either of us could actually submit the grant as well as do the request for reimbursement.
Calling six oh nine, six four six one.
All right, any questions or comments on this one? Did I hear something? Okay, hearing no comments, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that motion does carry.
Thank you.
Um, next item is R one twenty nine of twenty twenty, this one comes from Finance, Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, uh, R one twenty nine twenty twenty authorizing and directing the proper city officials to enter into an agreement with True North Consultants for site investigation services for the former Public Works facility, so move.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Jensen, Alder Person Schumacher.
So this is for, uh, DNR wanted a little bit more, uh, information about contaminant remediation on the site. So this is the consultant proposed to, to do that work for us. North, True North was, uh, used in previous previous jobs, uh, and did satisfactorily, uh, their, uh, cost was pretty low, and that is about it, I think, yeah.
All right, Director Schill, anything you want to add?
Yeah, just expand slightly, in July, uh, July thirteenth or fourteenth, we received a letter from the DNR indicating the need to do additional site investigative work on the former Public Works facility site. We shared that the requirements of the DNR with these consultants, uh, in seeking a proposal from each of them. They outlined what they believe to be the appropriate method, uh, to, um, meet the requirements of the DNR. You'll, you'll recognize that they each have to, or, or would have proposed putting together a work plan that subsequently would be reviewed by the DNR, so the scope of their full services would be finalized until the DNR approved the scope of, of the work plan. But nonetheless, each of the consultants put together what they understood would be the most appropriate approach to the project. True North, as well as AECom, were both qualified applicants, uh, or submitted proposals. We did discuss, uh, similar projects with them as well as the DNR. The DNR does have experience with both of the lower-cost firms, and I have, have done satisfactorily on similar, or type project, projects. So with that, it came as a recommendation to proceed. that, it came as a recommendation to proceed with True North Consultants, as was recommended as well, or mentioned earlier. They have done work on the site previously, not in the evaluation, but did do some work both on this site and the Milfab site and the new public works facility site when we demoed buildings out there. So we do have a history of a relationship with True North Consultants with environmental issues.
All right. Any questions or comments on this one?
As we, we'd also discussed in Finance Committee about with, even though they were the lowest bid on there, that any other costs that might be incurred for site cleanup thereafter would be included within a $34,000 remaining in budget for the building demolition project.
Yeah, certainly, we have remaining budget, as was mentioned, the 34,000 is the remaining budget from the building demolition project. We're not absolutely certain that we'll be able to contain it within that amount, but that is certainly the hope that we can control costs and prevent them from going over that. If there's a need to exceed that, we'd be back before the Finance Committee Council.
Any questions or comments from Alders? All right, here none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next one also comes from Finance Committee. Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, R130 2020 is the termination of tax incremental district number three and authorizing to distribute excess increment to overlying taxing jurisdictions. And so moved.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Jensen. Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, we worked on this one in late July, and this is just the formal wrap-up of TID number three. Forget how much is to be dispersed among the taxing districts. I'm trying to see if that was in there.
I'm sure Jamin knows off the top of his head.
350,000.
All right. Anything you want to add, Director Fiedel?
I know that...
Like 350,000.
Yeah, that pretty much nailed it on the head. It's just the formality that basically at this point, Holly and I will have to work through all of the paperwork and everything. I'm pulling up the information here to find out what the actual disbursement's going to look like. Obviously, it's just a forecast at this point, but... So yeah, the final transfer will be about 375,000, you know, give or take. The city's share of that, we're estimating at approximately 130,000. That probably won't occur until the end of August 2021, because we have to go through the financial audit and everything for closing out this too. But again, this step is just the formality of it. And then we have some other requirements along the way to finalize this TIF.
And can you refresh us on which TIF 3, which one that is?
This was the business partner.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I have one. Are you distributing that 375,000 evenly through the rest of the TIF districts or the ones that are kind of inawares, like TIF 5 and TIF 8 will receive a little bit more?
Oh, I wish the city got everything, but this is actually to spread it out amongst the taxing jurisdictions. So it'd be the city, the county, M A T C and all of that. So the city's actual share will be about 130,000 and the school district, yeah.
Okay, I misunderstood. Okay.
Oh, that's a good question. Anybody else have any questions? All right, here none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next item is R132, or R131. This one also comes from Finance Committee.
All right, so R131 2020 authorizing and directing the proper city officials to amend the city of Stoughton policy for the creation of tax incremental finance districts and approval of TIF projects. So moved.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves. Alder Person Schumacher.
So this had come up when we were looking at the Phase 2 development for Kettle Park West. And we wanted to, out of, or out of all of that discussion for Phase 2, we wanted to adjust our TIF policy so that we would like, what, so the two lines that were added in here were about the potential developers equity in the project and whether that would exceed 10%. And that was, you know, I think we went back and forth on that one for a while, but you know, we wanted to know whether the developer was going to make a killing on it or not. And we, you know, kind of wanted them at like a fair, fair profit margin in it, but not excessive. And the second bit was the, or related to it was a ratio of equity to the assistance being, you know, we only wanted it to be like about roughly equal, but give or take a little bit. And those are really the only two things that we're going to adjust within this policy at this time.
All right. Thank you. Anything you want to add, Jamin?
Yeah, this is a skin in the game question or issue. Obviously, this is just the policy we can, you know, the council is free to adjust as situations come up. But this is just a way to at least guide the conversation to make sure that potential developers have sufficient skin in the game and that the city's not taking on the majority of the risk. So this was just a way to at least drive the conversation when a project comes up.
Yeah, my question is, is where did you get that fancy formula?
I, you know, I actually learned something at one of Eller's presentations. And that's kind of what you're, to throw these in real quick. These are actually pretty low requirements. But the reason it came up with the KPW Phase 2 is, so if we look at the percentage of equity that Forward had projected, it was about 12.4%. And TIF assistance actually equaled 22% of the entire project. And that was kind of that question of, well, wow, we actually, you know, the city actually has more skin in the game than the developer at this point. So we wanted to leave it equal footing and with the conversation from there, so.
Okay.
Seems like that Phase 2 discussion was so long ago, at least when we were at this stage.
Are there any more questions or comments on this one? All right, here none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Were there any opposed? Oh, that motion carries. All right. Next item also comes from Finance Committee. Alder Person Schumacher.
We were busy.
Yeah.
All right, R132 2020, a resolution offering alternative payment arrangements to individuals and businesses who will be levied special assessments for the improvement of curb and gutter, side box, driveway aprons, carriage walks, retaining walls, sanitary sewer, storm sewer and water system improvements for 2020-only projects. So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, a second by Alder Person Reeves. Do you have this one memorized, Brett?
Pretty close.
Anything you want to highlight?
And we went through a lot of back and forth on this and we really did take our time with looking at a lot of different options that we could do to help out those who may have been in fact impacted by COVID over this year with their, with, you know, assessing them with things. Ultimately, we went through a lot of permutations on it and ultimately decided that, you know, we'd have to keep the, keep the interest rate solid because that was something that was hard written in state statute. And also, but then we could do something at least on the payment term limit. So that's, that's what we came up with.
And I know Attorney Dragney did a fair amount of work helping us prepare the options that Jamin put together here. I'll, Matt, if you want to speak to the work that you did, and then Jamin can kind of go through where we ended up.
Well, to be fair, I think Jamin and the committee did a lot more work than I did. But I don't really, I mean, I think that what the committee has developed is certainly, I think legally appropriate and it's really a policy call for the council now to decide whether this is what you want to do.
And what do you have on the screen, Jamin?
Well, this is just kind of the summary memo. There's not a ton of information in here. And I'm not, I'm not going to go through it in any amount of detail, but the overall goal of this was to stay within the legal parameters of the special assessments and not get ourselves in trouble on the back end while also trying to find a way to kind of assist the larger special assessments that are coming out of the 2020 projects. And I think we were able to do that. Ultimately, we're extending the payment period. We had to leave the interest rate the same just because that was kind of a specific legal issue that's written into the statute. You know, it's kind of a give and take on this. The fact that we're actually extending some of the repayment terms on some of the larger special assessments. There's a, there's a template in there that we're going to send out with the customers that are impacted because if they do take the entire time to pay, there is potential that they'll actually pay more in interest over the life of the special assessment, but their payments upfront will be, will be less. So the overall goal was let's find some kind of interim help for some of the people that may be struggling right now. And then hopefully on the back end in the repayment terms, they can pay down that principal a little quicker and maybe not pay as much in interest over the life of the special assessment. Now, that was the overall goal of this exercise. And like Alder Schumacher said, we, I think we brought this back probably four or five times and went through it a number of different ways. And this was kind of the best and easiest and most legal way we could come up with working this out.
Are there any questions or comments from Alders?
And in committee also with this, we made it very, probably very painful for Jamin to, to make sure that the, that the citizens that are in there with the special assessments, that the communication out to them will be very specific in outlining what that would be, you know, almost like a credit card. Like if you pay this much, it'll cost you this much over time. But if you pay this much, it'll be a different term in there. But just that we wanted to be really transparent about that and upfront about what these costs would be in the short term and long term.
Yeah, and to that point, I have the template up on the screen right now. And you can see we, you know, the top section is generally what they would get with a little bit of verbiage on the bottom. But we, we kind of added the different terms and added some notes and are going to try our best to make people aware that the longer you take to pay this off, you could potentially pay more interest over the life of this, this special assessment. So, you know, while you need help, go ahead and pay the minimum, but on the back end, try to pay down that principal as quickly as possible.
Thank you to the committee for doing this and helping create options for people during a time where those don't seem so plentiful.
We tried our best.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
No, just thank you for thinking and doing something about it. Thank you.
All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. I think that's it for business tonight.
Go to adjourn.
Second.
Who made the motion?
Sure.
Everybody.
All right. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Good night, all.
You guys Thursday, the committee's Thursday for the CIP meeting.
I already got the whole Finance Committee all worked up about it.
And Public Safety tomorrow night.
Okay. Take care.
All right.